Recording in progress.
Okay, Omega, the roll call, please. Uh, Nekis. Here. Amundson.
Here.
Go down.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Liam's here. So we can do the, during the inevitable meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I skipped ahead. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Liam.
Hey everybody, how's it going?
Did you run from Liam?
No, no. We had a little motor trouble on the way down.
Okay, and the first thing on our agenda is the swear in for our new.
Here's this, I'll just kind of read along and then say your name.
I, John Jennings. So it's all me and when we swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution as the state of Oregon, the Charter of the City of Sheridan, and that I will enforce and carry out all ordinance as required by the City of Sheridan. I will faithfully and honestly perform my duties as planning commissioner to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Item C is the public comment period, and the public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for planning commissioners to listen to the public but not for dialogue. The commissioners are allowed after, the commentators are allowed after three minutes to present information relevant to this forum, not otherwise listed as an agenda item. Please note, complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or the city manager prior to directly addressing the planning committee. Do we have any? I, I don't know the proper form or whatever.
Yeah, I'm with her.
So, the reason.
Just before anybody speaks, um, this is the time for public comment not specifically related to any of the agenda items.
Right.
So if you would like to speak about one of the agenda items, which I assume most of you are here for the subdivision, um, that there will be ample time for testimony as part of that public hearing, but we can't speak about it until that public hearing is open.
Thank you, Liam. That's okay, thank you.
I'm reading your mind there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're moving down to D, um, approval of the minutes for the July 8 meeting.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes for the July 8 meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. We're down to the public hearing. I have my script. Good evening, my name is Paula Nekis. I am the Chair of the Sheridan Planning Commission, and I will be presiding over this public hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of file number SUV dash twenty-four dash zero zero one, an application for preliminary subdivision approval and floodplain development approval for a hundred and seventeen lot division on approximately twenty-two acres of residentially zoned land to be called the Philip Landing Subdivision. The hearing is now open, it is six oh nine PM. State law requires several items to be ready for the record at the beginning of each meeting. The applicable criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Sheridan Development Code, section sixteen point five seven zero subdivision application. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed during this hearing. All testimony and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward the criteria or to such rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe apply to this case. The case will proceed with the staff report, followed by the applicant and those who are in support of the application. All those who are opposed to the application will then be allowed to speak, followed by those with general comments who are neither for nor against this application. The commission or staff may then question the applicant and those who testify. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut any testimony or evidence. If you have any documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please leave the material with the Deputy City Recorder, Omega Ordella Garses, who will make sure your evidence is identified and placed in the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to this body to determine if the hearing will be continued with time and date certain, or if the record will be kept open for submission of additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days, with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. At issue, which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, shall be raised not later than the final public hearing on this case. Such issues shall be raised with and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. This public hearing will proceed first, excuse me, with the staff report. After a summary, after a summary of the application, an applicable criteria is presented. Interested parties are given an opportunity to testify. Any party testifying before the commission must give their name and address for the record. Before we get, begin with the staff report, I must ask a few questions. For the audience, are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter? For the planning commission, are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or bias by any planning commissioner? For the audience, are there any challenges as to conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or bias related to any member of the commission or council? Okay. Um, City Planner Liam Bean, please get the staff report.
Okay, how's it going everybody? I am, gonna say Commissioner Jennings, welcome. Great. Um, supposed to be over there. Uh, so this is gonna be my first staff report with the City of Sheridan, so I want to make sure that we know how I'm planning on going through it. This is a long one, it's forty-eight pages. And a lot of this is checking boxes or repetitive. So, the way that I like to go through it is by addressing what I call like the touchpoints, or the friction points, right? The pieces of this staff report that, um, may need some extra explanation, that aren't just, here's the criteria, the criteria are met. Unfortunately, I didn't have a couple of minutes with Omega to brief them on which, uh, applications and things I might want to show up on the screen for everybody. Um, so, we'll kind of play it by ear. And if I'm still a little, uh, rattled, um, from some motor trouble on the road, I apologize. So all that out of the way, let's get to it. So. Again, with the touchpoints, I really am gonna be talking about the things that was only the conditions of approval. Right? Um, those are the big ones. Uh, for context, this subdivision has come before the planning commission in a similar form before. Not this exact one hundred and seventeen lot approval, but a very similar configuration for a hundred and twelve lots. Uh, the big difference between those two subdivisions, right, the two applications that you're gonna see, is the size of the blocks. The blocks are a little bit longer in this subdivision. So, for those of you who maybe heard it the first time, that's the big difference. Uh, the reason that the applicant is coming before us again, uh, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, uh, it's mostly due to the cost of development in wetlands. That's the primary issue, and the applicant can dive into that more if they want to. Um, there hasn't been any change in the city conditions. It's not that they don't want to continue to plat their subdivision and make it happen. It has been that since twenty twenty, it's been a little difficult to pull joint permits from the, oh gosh, from, the joint permit is DQ DSL and the Army Corps of Engineers, I think. It's been a little difficult to pull that permit. Um, and it's also, you know, cost prohibitive and time prohibitive. So, let's get into the meat and the potatoes. I haven't had time to highlight my copy. So, the first big issues are gonna be the lot sizes, right? You can see this in, um, comment, uh, or. Beginning in section A, comment three, dimensional standards, minimum lot area. Uh, Omega, can you pull up the tentative plat for me? Okay, thank you. Uh, the subdivision is across two parcels. One of those parcels is split zoned, split zoned R1, R2, so that's low density residential and medium density residential. Uh, if y'all remember from last week, medium density residential is basically our high density residential zone, right? It has the same zoning, uh, or loud density as R3, they're functionally interchangeable. Um, R1 is a little bit lower density. Um, and because of that, there are gonna be some larger lots in the top of the subdivision and smaller lots in the bottom of the subdivision. Um, in the R1 zone, every lot has to be seven thousand square feet. Every lot that the applicants are proposing creating has to be seven thousand square feet, right? They're showing it, it's all met. Uh, the next thing is there's gonna be some lot dimension standards, right? Minimum lot width, minimum lot depth. These are kind of tricky to measure per our code. Sometimes the definitions get a little funky. You'll notice that most of the applicant's lots are squares or rectangles. All of those easily meet the standards. Uh, the other issue is gonna be, some of them are a little funky, they have rounded corners because they're right up against the streets. Uh, those lots, when we apply our code's definition of minimum width and minimum depth, they also meet that. So the applicant is not proposing to create any substandard lots in the R1 zone. So, friction point one, all the lots in the R1 zone are good. As proposed by the applicant. Um. It's something quite long. Uh, when we get into the next zone, the R2 zone, the lower portion of the subdivision, so we've got one lot that's entirely R2 and one lot that is split zoned. Um, this is where things get a little bit more complicated, because the applicant is proposing two different kinds of lots. Um, they're proposing a series of lots for attached single-family dwellings or townhomes, um, and they're proposing a series of lots for detached single-family dwellings. The detached single-family dwellings have to have a five thousand square foot lot area. The applicant is not proposing to create any lots for the purpose of single-family detached dwellings that are less than five thousand square feet. The townhome standard in our current code is a little messy and complicated. There's a different, uh, area standard for if your, if your attached single-family has just one shared wall or two shared walls. If you have just one shared wall, the minimum lot area is four thousand square feet. All of the attached single-family, uh, lots that the applicant's proposing, and I'm sorry for putting emphasis on attached to make it sound funny, but I want to make it very clear that I mean the townhomes, not the regular single-family. Um, all of those are gonna be four thousand square feet per the applicant's proposal. So, what that means is they're big enough if they just have one shared wall per our code, or they're big enough if they have more than one shared wall per our code. The applicant has included a plan, and I, I don't, it's taking time to pull stuff up, so.
It's a big document.
It's a big document. Um, they basically, uh, included a proposed footprint plan. In that footprint plan, they show all of their townhome lots as having one common wall. So all the lots meet that requirement. There are three lots that I think are kind of fun, so I called them out. Um, and there are lots that are next to townhome lots that are either shown in the plan as being townhomes or as being detached single-family. Uh, one is shown as detached single-family, two are shown as attached single-family. If we add it up, I can point them out on the back. Um, what's interesting about these lots is they're big enough that they could kind of go either way. Um, and they meet the criteria for either. So, even if the applicant were to later change their mind and want to put the attached dwelling on that lot, it would still meet all the minimum criteria for an attached dwelling or detached dwelling. Thank you, Omega, uh, we're rocking and rolling. So, in those weird cases where something can go either way, I like to double check to make sure it can go either way. And in this case, the applicant has made them a little bit larger, so they're both, there are three of them, they're all five thousand square feet, and remember, that's the detached minimum. There's some other things that are being dedicated that I want to point out. Um, down at the bottom, that big lot, and we don't, uh, Omega, can you circle that big empty lot in the bottom corner for me?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, just if we're looking at the, that inset map of the subdivision, it will be the L-shaped lot towards the bottom corner. It's quite.
My line, is it that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They, that one right there, that is gonna be dedicated as a stormwater facility. So, all of that space is gonna be used to help accommodate for the stormwater generated by the, uh, generated by the subdivision, as well as the regular storm system. So they're gonna be building a stormwater detention pond. Uh, the next kind of weird ones is there's these two slivers. One is a wide sliver, if you see it coming down Blair Street. Um, and then one is kind of a narrow sliver. These are gonna be dedicated as open space and potential park space for the city. So it's very small, we're not talking about like a large city park, but open space where somebody could potentially take their dog or, and it also just helps them to engage with some other concerns leaving that open space. So, it would be dedicated to us at some point in the future, and we could figure out if that a mini park? Is it a place to just walk? Um, or is it just nice open space? So, those are kind of the purpose and use of all the lots. And all of the lots meet the minimum dimensions for the uses that are requested. Whew. Lot area. That's, that's most of my review. Great. Uh, let's get to some stuff with conditions of approval. Sorry, I was planning on highlighting my packet before I came in. Didn't work out so well. So, let's talk about the floodplain overlay district really quickly. The applicant is requesting floodplain development approval. That comes along with any development we've occurred in the floodplain. Um, just because they get floodplain development approval for the subdivision doesn't mean they have floodplain development approval for each house on the subdivision. It's just the approval to go start working on this, right? Build the roads, uh, put in the utilities, get everything platted. When each dwelling comes in, it will also have an additional floodplain development review. Uh, if we take a look at the floodplain map, the entire, uh, the entirety of the subdivision is not within the floodplain, which is quite rare in Sheridan. Only just that southern L is in the floodplain. But that does require the applicant's heat floodplain development approval, which they have requested. I only really address three criteria, and as most criteria apply when things are eight notes. Um. The most complicated of these criteria, right, the first one is just, hey, sixteen point two eight oh point oh three oh eight, this is in the floodplain, right? But, uh, a really confusing way of saying, this is in the floodplain. Uh, we get down to sixteen point two eight oh point oh three oh point G, that's gonna be comment two on page thirteen. Uh, it basically says that the floodplain administrator shall require an additional letter of map provision prior to the issuance of floodplain development permit if the proposed development would increase the base flood elevation by more than one foot in areas where FEMA has provided base flood elevation. Uh, we have no evidence to suggest that this will, that this subdivision would increase base flood elevation um, for other users. And in fact, remember that big old stormwater detention facility they're digging? Uh, digging, that's a big recessed area in the ground. So it's actually likely that it would have a positive impact. Um, our comment is therefore, A, we suggest that the applicant at some point consider doing a letter of map amendment or letter of map removal based on fill, um, but it is not required as part of their subdivision approval. Uh, final floodplain comment is the comment I said earlier, which is when each dwelling unit comes in as part of this subdivision, if it is in the floodplain, it will be reviewed for compliance with the floodplain development standards at that time. And for those of you who are familiar, that means flood venting, elevated foundation, right? All those things that help, uh, help preserve something during a flood, so that it doesn't come up to their first floor and really, most flood damages of the house get washed away. It's the mold and the rot and the destruction it does to your house. So this is, will be evaluated at that time. And the applicant's narrative, which I've included throughout the, um, staff report, they say, hey, we're gonna develop all these to meet those standards at the time we go to construct. Okey dokey. Standards for land divisions, minimum lot area, that's in the R1 and R2 zones sections of the staff report. Um, so I just summarize it, the applicant is not requesting any lots that are variation from our minimum lot area. So that's already pretty good. Um, access standards, our code is pretty strict about creating new accesses. It has to be off of a right-of-way that is street width, not, not narrower, or it can't be off an alley. And our code actually is pretty non-agnostic about new easement accesses. It's not, it's not fond of anything that's off of a, of a street improvement. And the applicant is providing access off of a street for all of the proposed lots, a street of appropriate width. If we take a look at this small version of the application, right, the small inset map, you can see that there's the Blair Street right-of-way running through the center, which is a collector right-of-way. Um, nothing will be having its primary access off of that. Our code defines a front property line as the thinnest one, right? The narrowest one, the shortest one. Um, and you'll notice that all of the front property lines of the newly created lots will be against local streets, not beat collector streets like Blair Street. Every other street is a local street. So when I say collector when we're talking about the rest of the application, I only mean Blair Street. Everything else is local, right? So that should be really low levels of traffic. And you'll notice, again, every property fronts a local street. None of the properties are having, are fronting Blair Street in terms of their front property line. Some of them have side exterior, but. All the access requirements are met by this proposed application. So, uh, what is a little weird, um, and Omega, I'm wondering, can we scroll down maybe two pages? Yes, um, if you look at the south end of the subdivision, and this is not necessarily a map for this purpose, but if you look at the south end of the subdivision, there's this really narrow stretch of right-of-way. That's a city alley, and in that alley is an open stormwater drainage ditch. Um, because some of those parcels will front an alley on their rear side and a street on their front side, our code technically defines them as throughlots, which is really weird, um, but it's the way the code is written. Um, in a previous version of this application, the city required that a site obscuring fence be installed along those rear property lines, um, for two purposes. One, safety, to keep people from going into that drainage ditch. Um, and especially kids from falling in, and that was a request from Public Works, right? We want to keep our drainage ditch protected. And two, um, to prevent, like, to add some screening. Um, this is where we put the condition in this application, because as their nature of a throughlot, we can condition that there be screening for one side, and that's what we're conditioning here. That's our proposed condition. So our first, one of our first proposed conditions is that the lot be appropriately screened from the adjoining alley. So remember that one. We're gonna get. Well, questions come later. Then you guys get to groom it. Okay. Next, as we keep going, side lot lines, they're run in parallel. Everything we saw was a pretty good box, pretty good rectangle. Our code wants everything to run parallel to the street as best as possible. You'll notice that Blair Street, as it passes through the subdivision, kind of wobbles a little bit. That's intentional, um, and it will prevent all the lines from adding up perfectly. But to the best of their ability, the applicant has made all of the lines right angles against streets. So, that's met. Um, the grading standards, uh, all of the grading is meeting our standards, right? They're not creating any super steep streets, they're not creating any super steep aisles of dirt, right? Um, nothing in the current proposal, uh, is in violation of our standards. They have a grading plan attached, and there will be further review of their civil plans by our engineer as they are ready to construct. So, there will be additional review of the grading to maintain compliance. And the applicant in their narrative has said, hey, we're gonna be compliant with all the grading requirements. Um, easements, uh, easements, what, what, the, the only reason I made a comment on easements is that in the tentative plat, which is sheet. Can we go to the tentative plat, that sheet, uh, ten C fifty? Um, the easements aren't shown, but on the site plan, the easements are shown. So the applicant has shown the easements, and they're prepared to, uh, put in utility easements. They're just not shown on the tentative plat, they're shown on the site plan. Uh. There's gonna be a, there needs to be a ten-foot wide, uh, utility easement on the front property line going back, which is not as far back as the entirety of the front seven. That's for private utilities primarily. And then any place where public utilities cross private property, there will need to be public utilities easements. Uh, we talked about that stormwater drainage ditch. It shows like there may be some utilities coming across it. At the time they plat, there will have to be a public utility easement. And if we scroll down one page to the site plan. Oh, it's a little further, let's hope we can do it. Um. Is it on the site plan? Or is it on the composite utility plan, I can't remember? Um, but there's a plan that shows the easements, so the applicant understands that easements will be required, and they are prepared to deck with them. So, there is a condition of approval here stating that the applicant include the private utility easements and the public utility easements on their final plat. So they will be included on the final plat. Uh, we talked a little bit about the blocks. These blocks are longer than the last subdivision, and they're longer than the minimum in the Sheridan municipal code. Uh. This is one that I kind of want to highlight. Is it the code says that, um, "The length, width, and shape of blocks shall be designed with regard, uh, with regard to providing adequate building sites for the use contemplated." Um, that's a pretty tricky question. Are they, are the locks long enough for the uses contemplated? Um, is the access appropriate? These are mostly residences. They're on a modified, uh, three-by-four grid, um, or is it almost even three-by-five, right? No, it's three-by-four. These are longer blocks than typical. Um, are they inappropriate for the uses contemplated? Staff does not believe so, right? We, we, we have found that they are appropriate for the uses contemplated, which is as single-family attached to detached dwellings. The next is the actual standard, which says that we shall not exceed three hundred and fifty feet for our blocks. So, these blocks do exceed three hundred and fifty feet. In the applicant's narrative, they go from four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty feet. However, our code has an open clause where it says, hey, if environmental conditions or topography pose a challenge, um, then the block widths can be extended. We discussed earlier the reason that this application was so difficult to get going and plat was due to its nature as being primarily wetlands. That is an environmental or topographical issue, which makes it difficult for the subdivision to develop. In order to make it a little, a little bit more optimal, um, at a more optimal configuration, right? You leave less empty space, the applicant proposed long blocks, right? Their blocks are no more than double our block size, and they have a unique environmental challenge, which is the high volume of wetlands on the property. So, staff found that it was appropriate. Um, the applicant has also proposed to add mid-block crossings, so that is shown on their site plan. That means that halfway through each block, there will be. That means that halfway through each block, there will be a pole bout and a striped crossblock. And the purpose of that is to sort of break things up for pedestrians so they can cross the block easier. And it also provides traffic calming. And that is going to be shown on sheet. Yeah, included it on their site plan, which is sheet C100. You can see that all of those, they even moved the location of some of the streetlights to the near, those mid-block crossings. So it's an increased pedestrian safety, decreased travel speed, and it breaks up the long blocks. So. It's sort of a, hey, we have an environmental hazard, can we make our blocks marginally longer? Again, there's no block that's anywhere close to a double length. And as a trade-off, we'll add some mid-block crossings, sort of improved crossings, so improved pedestrian safety across the block. The code allows for these things to be done because of environmental topographical issues. Staff found that there are environmental topographical issues that would merit long blocks in this case. So I did want to spend a little bit of time on block length. I know it's not everybody's favorite thing to talk about. We don't all go home and talk to our partners about how long that block was. I do. It's because I'm not full. Again, there's other standards for blocks which relate to traffic circulation. We talked about this is a pretty standard grid. It's very appropriate for traffic circulation. There may be some, some issues in the short term, but in the long term, this is pretty great, right? For both human traffic and vehicle traffic, it's a pretty strong layout. Again, nearly a grid, not quite, but very good. The only thing that prevents it from being that is the stormwater drainage, which is necessary. So it's a, in terms of the connections, very good. Our code tries to add some stuff to this to make it less subjective and more objective, adding a definition of nearby things that people can walk to or bike to. Those definitions are kind of weird. The subdivision is actually technically not nearby anything for pedestrians. And for bicyclists, because they will have access via Blair or via Viola Street, they have plenty of connectivity. So there's connectivity for bicyclists, and it's not nearby a school, because it's, it's like a quarter mile from the edge of the subdivision. So it's just kind of a weird definition. So they're meeting everything. Again, we talked about connectivity, right? They plan to extend Viola Street and Western Street all the way to the end of city limits at the end of their property. Again, we talked about the connectivity impacts of long blocks, that's being mitigated by mid-block crossings. So. The connectivity criteria are all met. Yeah, the, the next standard is that they're going to extend collectors and arterials. There's a collector, there's Blair Street, we talked about that. We will talk more about Blair Street soon. So now we can get into the meat potatoes, more meat potatoes, or out of my meat potatoes, we're into engineering potatoes now. So we're going to talk about the public improvements. So the applicant is prepared to do all the necessary public improvements. We just sort of get nitty gritty about it with the findings. Basically, I did my findings the exact same way the code is written, which is the exact same way the applicant address things in their narrative. And one thing that you're going to see throughout these findings is these have conditions of approval and they're pretty much just, hey. We're going to, when the applicant does their full civil plans prior to construction, all of these will be reevaluated by our engineering staff at that time. Which is, again, typical development process. So. Frontage improvements. Frontage improvements are the curb gutter sidewalk, right? Sidewalk kind of has its own section, so frontage improvements here, we're going to talk mostly about curb gutter. Viola Street and Western Street, right, they're platted, but they don't necessarily have perfect curb gutter. The applicant is planning on adding curb gutter to all of their roads, right? We have a condition of improvement that says that improved curb shall be installed at the frontage of each newly created lot. So they're going to do their curb and gutter. Pretty typical. Next is we get into city streets. So there are some engineering comments about their streets, and you'll see that all of this is just to be addressed in their report. For example, we haven't yet got an erosion control plan. That's also usually part of the civil comments, so that's requested via a condition of approval, we'll talk about later. I do want to get into this with the TIA. So the TIA is Traffic Impact Analysis. We got a fully complete TIA prior to the application going, that's already good. The TIA did use a previous configuration for the subdivision, that 112 block configuration, and shows ODOT right of way. As part of the approval, we would like the applicant to update the TIA, to include the updated information, that is on 117 lots, not 112. And to have it verified by ODOT because it includes the ODOT right of way. That would be done between our engineers and the applicant's engineers. We don't expect this to cause much of an impact, right? We're talking about a very minor difference in the number of lots and the configuration. And what streets we expect traffic to go on, that kind of thing, our engineer. But in the case that it does create an impact, we propose a condition of approval that says, hey, we want you to update the TIA. Based on that updated TIA, we may need additional things shown in the civil plans, right? That might be effective ending of traffic calming to slightly wire improvement or something. It would be TBD, we don't expect much to change. So that's why we're including this, we can accept the TIA as it currently is, right? It's not going to make a difference in the traffic generated by five dwellings, it's a pretty small drop in the ocean. So you'll see these conditions of approval are basically prior to construction, finalize your construction documents, get them approved by our engineer, pull your permit, we, you, will. Once they have this, we can actually do the land use compatibility statement to do that. Again, pretty standard, just. We'll, we'll deal with this at the time of construction, right? Surface water drainage and storm systems. So we know that there's been some concern regarding the storm system in the past. Overall, the storm system here is pretty strong, and we have our engineer to talk about that if you have any specific questions. There may be a small issue with lots 109 through 117, those are the lots on the southern part of the subdivision. It looks like the way they're graded, they may slough a little into the drainage ditch. Right now, as of today, they're putting water in that drainage, right? So the fact that they will be directing some of their stormwater onto the street, potential improvement. But we want to make sure that that's addressed in the final stormwater plans. Again, there's nothing that's being directed onto private property. Almost all the stormwater that the system has captured in the subdivision and is running the stormwater detention pond. So if you have any, it's not a pond, it's stormwater detention facility. If you have any questions about that, when we ask questions of staff, you can ask our engineer, he can give you more information. But the big issue with these plans wasn't that they were bad, it was just that they're not showing it phases yet. So as you'll see going forward, there's a condition of approval saying, hey, when you do your civil plans, you're proposing to plat in phases. Can you also show your civil plans in phases too? So that we know that if you just build out one phase, it's still a complete system. And the applicant has had a chance to look at that condition, and they didn't really have an issue with that. So that's just another thing. Again, we don't expect there to be a serious issue. The applicant is capturing their stormwater, and they submitted an initial stormwater report. They're going to have to, you know, it's a draft stormwater report, like all of these things, they go back and redo it at the time of civil plans. Yep, the stormwater report is a draft, so it's incomplete, and we are requesting, we have a condition of approval to request that they complete the stormwater report. Our code only requires basically the draft. Sanitary sewer, third verse name is the first, we'd like to show, see phases when the civil plans come in, that's the only issue. Only major issue. Same thing with the water system. There, there, there's a 14-inch water line, I think that the, the engineer wants to connect a little differently than what's shown on the applicant's plan. But the primary thing here is show the build-out and your plans, submit your civil plan. You see the conditions of approval match that as well. Okay, sidewalks, I said we come to sidewalks later, sorry. I apologize, I had it going to the like call folks, that's all I'm doing. We talked about sidewalks, right? Viola Street has a half-street improvement right now, so it's got sidewalks on one side, not on the other. The applicant is planning on improving the sidewalks. What they do show is they show it going down past their property, down the public sidewalk, and making that public improvement right there. Can you guys see that gray line? That's the applicant improving the sidewalk beyond their property. And that actually will, that's public right of way, right, they can do that. That's going to improve the sidewalk connectivity for everybody, so that's a really big deal. We have the condition of approval that they will do that, because they showed it, but they are planning on doing it. So you'll notice that a lot of our conditions of approval are just, the applicant will do the thing that they were planning on doing in the first place, right? The next thing is I have some timing things about the condition of approval. The sidewalks for the parcels that will be either public, like the stormwater facility or the two little public parcels over on Blair Street. Those should be done before the subdivision is platted. The rest of the sidewalk should be done before each adjacent home is constructed. So you can see the timing is in there in the conditions of approval. Okey dokey. Landscaping, the applicant has submitted a landscaping plan, it shows street trees along all of the streets. The street trees are all well-known, completely compliant species. They're not the kind that gets too big and tears up your sidewalk. It meets all of our current design criteria. And again, you're going to see that same thing of, there's a condition of approval to put a root barrier. It's not like they're not planning on getting a root barrier, we just need to make sure it happens. And then conditions of approval that the trees fronting the public properties be done first, and that the trees fronting the places where there will be homes aren't done before the houses are CBO'd. So timing here. Street signs and striping. We are asking that they submit a striping plan as part of their civil plans. They, they may be showed what they're going to do with the streets, but a formal striping plan will be submitted as part of the civil construction plans. And you'll see later on, we are requesting they stripe a white lane on our street. Which is a collector, and that's actually following what we should be doing for collectors in our TSP. Talk about that later, that's a little, it's a little tease to keep you guys interested. As we go through the most fun part of land use planning. Okay, the last part is that the back section of this is about our public performance bond. This is a pretty standard request, right? The idea is, we get a bond, if the applicant doesn't complete the improvements, we can use the bond to complete the improvements. And then we do a maintenance bond for a year. We, we are requesting a condition of approval if those bonds be included. And these bonds are included based on what city manager requests. So this was something that's a city manager comment, right? It's, this is totally like to do. Okay, screening walls and hedges. Fence of walls and hedges. We wouldn't have a look at this section if we weren't going to condition it. There's no mandatory fencing that the applicant needs to install. But we are asking that they do a fence for the rear property line of those properties that front our public drainage ditch, remember for safety, for screening. The applicant didn't address this all that much because there's no mandatory fence for them to build. In this section, I just made a finding saying it would be appropriate if they were to do a wooden fence or a slatted chain link fence. Any kind of typical site obscuring fence that you could find in Sheridan is appropriate, and it would be a six-foot tall fence. So we just go into the details of the fences, this planning, and you'll see there's a condition of approval that goes on there. A proposed condition of approval that a six-inch site obscuring wooden or a site obscuring chain link be installed. Public facilities, this is going to be kind of a third verse name as the first. Our code is very repetitive and very long. So the public facility section is primarily just saying the same stuff that we just reviewed regarding streets, stormwater, sewer. And you're going to see the same condition of approval, the public improvements be approved by the city engineer prior to construction, and that they will maintain compliance with our public works standards at the time of construction. That's, there's one big long condition of approval at the back of the packet, that basically just restates all of this in one place. This is just the, again, this is the standard mode of construction. Is there anything that jumps out here? The applicant is going to do all the, they're planning on doing all of the improvements. Yep, there, there's no, I think there's something that jumps out here. If we get down to standards on page 31, these are for private facility improvements. Remember we talked about like the 10-foot private utilities easement? That's for those kinds of things like underground power, gas lines, that kind of stuff. This is just maintaining compliance with those improvements as well. With the sanitary sewer, it was interesting, I think they just stormwater section, same with the streetlights, no issues with the street lighting plan. Like I said, they put the streetlights near the mid-block crossings, I really appreciate that, that's just nice. Condition of approval that it will be done compliant to our public works design standards. This is a, basically a restatement of my previous comment about easements, right? They said they're going to do a 10-foot easement, they said they're going to do public utilities easement. It's totally expected, just not shown on the tentative plat, it will be shown on the final plat. Storm drainage and erosion control plan. Again, third verse name is the first, they will come back and redo their stormwater report, they'll have their final civil plans at the time of construction. Storm drainage standards, same here, again, a draft stormwater report was submitted, our engineers would review it and then give them back to their final stormwater report. And the one thing that he has identified is, again, there might be a chance that some stuff might go into our current storm drain ditch. And we'd rather be captured by the private system, it's already mostly captured by the new system. Well, not private system, it's a public system, but you know what, the new system develops for the subdivision. Streets, we can get into it, this is where the rubber hits the road. Okay. I, I gotta break it up, man, this is like, oh. Like I said, I'm, I'm just covering the touchless. Okay, so there are three existing platted streets. We've got Viola, Western, and Blair that all intersect the subdivision. Western is platted but not improved, Viola is partially improved, and Blair, as it comes through the subdivision, is neither platted nor improved, but is shown on our TSP. The applicant is putting a little bit of a bend in Blair Street, you guys see that nice little, little bend? I called it a chicane, it's even more gentle than a chicane. I just like writing the word chicane. But the purpose of that bend is that if you look on the other side of the street, there's this 60-foot wide gravel easement. At some point, that future gravel easement will be Blair Street. Right now, the city does not own it, and we have no plans to try and acquire it anytime soon. But that is future Blair Street, and so what the applicant did is instead of drawing just a straight line through their subdivision, which would have been easier for them, they did this little bend, made all their work harder. Aligned everything so it will line up perfectly, and then the little bend will also potentially act as some minor traffic calming. So overall, kind of a nice little touch, everything's aligned perfectly. You'll see later, our code is really picky, it says, hey, we don't want to create a T-intersection and then another T-intersection for a single street. And this means that in the future, in the far future, when Blair Street goes all the way through, it will be a perfect line. There won't be any intersections that cause a jog. So that's where that little bend in Blair Street is. I don't think there's anything else they're planning on doing, either appropriate half-street or full-street improvements, pretty much the whole way. Half-street improvement basically means they're improving their side of the street, the side of the street that belongs to a future property owner would be an improvement they develop or if it still happens. We're going to get into streets so much, so I'm trying not to eat a dead horse, but I'm going to. Talked about bikeways, there's plenty of travel width for bikeways here. There's the standard travel width for bikeways. Our code, oh gosh, has a little extended travel ways, size to accommodate that. Accessways, like I said, they're planning on continuing to improve that extra little bit of sidewalk. So that's improving that accessway, right, and they're keeping that good. And really what we're going to talk about is the continuance and improvements of streets. Talked about Blair Street and that easement. Because that's a private easement, we don't want people to think it's Blair Street and just drive off over it, right? That does not belong to the city. We have a utilities access easement across that 60-foot private easement on the other side, but it's a gravel road. It, it, it technically is part of a parcel. If you look on the map behind you, well, you can see at the top, it's like a T-shaped parcel. We are proposing that the applicant showing their. We are proposing that the applicant showing their future civil plans a gate that can be locked. That way, we would still have access to our utilities, or in an emergency, we can still open the gate if people want to get out. But that it would prevent people from driving onto someone's driveway. So that's what you're going to see for this condition of approval for the continuation of streets. Again, there's the appropriate continuation of bikeways, appropriate continuation of accessways. Alignment, this is what we just talked about, they aligned Blair Street, kind of creates a little bit of a headache, but they did the extra work, Blair Street is aligned. Future extensions of streets, basically our code says, you're going to extend your street all the way to the end of your property. They did, you're going to see that there's sort of a natural hammerhead turnaround at the end of Viola and Western streets. Those probably won't get built out further into the county, onto those lots, because they're not zoned residential. But this is what our code requires, and this is what the applicant has done. So, again, they're going all the way to the edge, that's the future extension of street here. Unfortunately, there is an issue with the extension of streets, which is, Western Street currently, basically from I believe Sherman, does not exist. It's platted, but it's not there. It dead-ends in someone's dirt driveway. And that dirt driveway is actually city right of way, which is weird, but it dead-ends in a dirt driveway. So, the applicant is not improving Western Street down, that is past their property. Western Street is a little too narrow right now, it's about forty feet right of way. Our standard right-of-way width for a local street is fifty feet, and the applicant is planning on dedicating five. That's pretty standard, if you dedicate half of the way to get there, the person on the other side, they dedicate the other half when they go to build, right? Keep it fair, that way, nobody has to do ten. So the applicant's going to do their five, but that creates that little bottleneck down there at the end of Western Street, and... Man, it'd be great, but the applicant doesn't own that property, we're not going to, they can't dedicate it, right? They can't make that thing wider to bring it up to compliance. And so, there's just kind of a natural hammerhead turnaround for their, Western Street is going to have around a hundred and fifty feet where it doesn't go all the way through. And because of that, just like we're asking for a barrier to prevent people from driving over Blair Street, we would ask for a barrier to prevent somebody from driving over the dirt portion of Western Street. There is a neighboring property that is vacant, that is also ripe for future redevelopment, that has not been completely annexed into the city. At the time that property is annexed, we could likely get to five feet to then finish that section of Western Street. So, it's not solely on the applicant, that one's kind of on us, is sort of what the finding says. Oh, we talked a lot about Western Street. I feel like I've needed Viola out, but Viola's the star at this one. So again, here we talk, there's a condition of approval, it's about the TIA and some potential off-site improvements, right? They're doing all the connections they need to, but we are going to ask that they upgrade or update their TIA just a little bit, just to include those five new valley units. And in the case that that dramatically changes something, we would like a condition of approval. So we're asking if I can consider that. Intersection angles, all of the intersection angles except for the ones on Blair Street are great. Our goal is to get ninety degrees, right? And we especially want ninety degrees where Blair Street leaves and comes out of the subdivision, which they did. The issue is when they aligned Blair Street, right, they found that perfect alignment, kind of creates those little bends that stops it from being a ninety-degree angle. There's close to ninety degrees, it's able, they're within the boundaries of our code, and it's a result of the realignment. So, those two not perfect-perfect intersections, staff finds that they're still appropriate. They're still within our margins, and they have done their best to keep every newly-created intersection exactly ninety degrees. If you get down there, they're perfect Ls and Ts. So these are, I'm just going through these in detail, but these are the tricky ones. Streets are fun. Existing streets, we talked about the five-foot right-of-way dedication on Western Street that the applicant is making, condition of approval that they will show it. Street names, they haven't named their streets yet. That's okay, it will be named on the final plaque. I included a condition of approval that a street plan and address plan should be included prior to the final plaque, so that Yvonne can review it and make sure that it's appropriate. The city recorder does all of the addressing. So, before you, before they plat, they can name the streets. And that is their variety. Right now, there's streets A through C, so I think the applicant will probably have some fun ideas. Grades and curves, all of the grades, we talked about the grading, it's all appropriate, we're not creating streets like this. Curves, again, they're following ninety degrees as much as possible, grades and curves all meet our requirements. It's gently sloping to move stormwater, but no steep slopes that could hurt driving. General right-of-way improvement widths, this is where it gets tricky again. Blair Street right-of-way is going to be sixty feet, that's what's shown for a collector. The applicant has included some sections, some draft sections of what a street will look like, and their draft sections basically match what our TSP is requesting for for a section. So, the draft section's from there, match what the TSP is asking for. We, this is where we are asking for a condition of approval to just stripe the bike travel lanes. This will basically kind of designate that out. But you'll notice that I included figure four, which is our TSP, which shows the twelve-foot travel lane, six-foot bicycle portion of the travel lane. We're just asking for that to be designated on the roadway. Here's where it gets confusing, and I think the applicant may want to speak to this later, so I will leave words for them, I promise. Is it street A through C are our local streets, and per our municipal code, that says that they show thirty-four foot right-of-way? But the transportation systems plan has a lower minimum, or not right-of-way dedication, but improved travel width, sorry, I said right-of-way. The improved travel width is thirty-four feet, your right-of-way is fifty feet, they're showing fifty feet of right-of-way and a thirty-foot travel width. This is where the municipal code and the transportation systems plan, I mean, the transportation systems plan is from nineteen ninety-nine. It's a little, it doesn't necessarily keep up. So in the previous application, it was agreed that the, what would happen is that they would reduce the size of the planter strips. And in order, reducing the size of the planter strips would allow the applicant to do a thirty-four-foot travel width. But, that math didn't really include the buffer for a curb or things like that, so staff proposes, just as a starting place, including a condition of approval, the applicant will do a thirty-four-foot travel lane. We understand the planning commission, this is a point you may want to consider, because if we do do a thirty-four-foot travel width above much narrower planter strip, or maybe there won't be able to be a planter strip on both sides. And that reduces the kind of plantings that can go there, the kind of street trees, like the really good shade-throwing trees that don't mess up your sidewalk, want a little bit more area to grow with their, with a regard, right? So this is something to consider, and it was discussed at the last planning commission, and that was what was agreed upon. So, we are proposing that we condition that again. The reason that I say staff's proposing is because the application contained both standards in different places. So there was areas where they showed the thirty-foot width, and areas where they said, hey, we'll do thirty-four. So, we're saying, well, thirty-four, that was conditioned last time, let's start there. And finally, Western Street and Viola Street are not full-street improvements, they're going to be half-street improvements, and the city engineer has evaluated the draft sections and found them to be compliant for an appropriate half-street improvement. Again, that bottom portion of Viola Street's pretty much a full-street already, the half-street is that northern portion, and then all of Western Street, we get a wider half-street improvement. So, you can see our city engineer has evaluated that, found it to be appropriate. The next bit's our construction specs. And that brings us back to the civil plans, which will be submitted at the time of construction, evaluated by our public works and engineering staff. So you can see that all of these are now reflected in my recommended conditions of approval. We've recommended nineteen conditions of approval. First is that master condition saying, hey, you're held to the development standards of our code at the time you apply, the construction standards at the time you go to build. You will submit civil plans, they will be in phases, so that nothing is phased out, right? Sometimes it happens, this applicant, very eager, right? But occasionally, phase one gets built, and it takes a while for phase two to get built after some things get sold. So we want to make sure that all the things are designed in, in phase loops. If you have any questions about what that means, you can ask the city engineer. So I'm a humble planner. So that's condition one, that's the big one. The next condition is condition two, right? That's the private utilities easement we talked about. Condition three, proposed condition three, is the public utilities easements. Proposed condition four is the five-inch strip of right-of-way to accept Western Street out of that little ditch. Proposed condition five is the public sidewalk, that off-site improvement that they're voluntarily showing. Again, these, most of these conditions are, the applicant will do, the applicant proposed to do, right? We're not, these aren't, we're not adding a ton of burden with these conditions. Or, proposed condition six, sorry, be the curb. Proposed condition seven is the sidewalks with sidewalk timing. Proposed conditions eight and nine relate to the landscaping, right? Root barrier and then landscaping timing. Proposed condition ten is, you'll do your DEQ permitting before you go to build. Proposed condition eleven is the bike lanes. Proposed condition twelve is our right-of-way width, and this is the condition that I would say is a starting point, right? There is a section of the code that allows this to be waived and reduced, but not by staff. Proposed condition thirteen is they amend their TIA, and hey, if that tiny amendment changes something, we would have grounds to go. That sidewalk improvement, can you do the other side too? There's a crack or something like that, right? Based off of a test done at that time. We don't expect there to be a dramatic change, and the applicant is already showing off-site improvements. So, don't want to sound scary there, but it's just kind of a, recover in our millions, right? Condition fourteen is the fence we discussed, the screening fence. Proposed condition fifteen is a temporary gate on Blair Street. And a, proposed area on, well, they're actually showing the area on Western Street, I don't think we conditioned, I think it's shown in their plans. Sixteen is the amendment of the draft stormwater report to the complete stormwater report. Proposed condition seventeen is the address plan and street names. Proposed condition eighteen is the bond, and proposed condition nineteen is the maintenance bond.
Yes!
Yes. Okay. Are there any questions of the staff from the commission before we continue and accept additional testimony? So, if you had to make questions, now's the time.
I don't know who to answer it. I was curious with the traffic analysis, if anything came back about any necessary changes on the city side of Blair. I mean, obviously, there's a stop sign already here, and I'm assuming there'll be one at the entrance, but, I mean, there's no painted crosswalks or anything in that area.
Chris, are you still on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm going to deflect that one, the city engineer. So, Chris, did you hear of Commissioner Anderson's question?
Was it if there's going to be traffic, new traffic control devices on Blair and Viola?
On Blair, yes, on the Blair and Viola intersection, if the TIA indicates that there may be a need for traffic control. Additional.
Such as crosswalks.
Or, I don't know, the four-way stop would be necessary there, just curious, if that came back.
All right, one second.
Do we have any other questions for staff while Chris is?
Yeah.
On the fence?
Yes.
That you mentioned along the, basically that alleyway there?
Yes.
The reports say lots one oh seven through one nineteen.
Yes.
So it's gonna, it's gonna wrap around and then cut back?
It would just be on their rear side. So if you, oh gosh.
That would be, that would be where Western stops.
Yeah, it would be one of them, lots one oh nine through one seventeen.
Yes.
Not one oh seven.
Not one oh seven through one nineteen.
It's okay, it's going to be along that, so, it's ready for me to humble one. But yes, so if you basically just imagine it, it will be across their rear property line. And so, and but so, most likely, when somebody builds a single-family, well, like, they like to have a rear property line fence. So this is not a particularly wild or burdensome or anything out of the ordinary. We just want to make sure that nobody falls into that drainage ditch, and that it helps delineate that kind of public property from that private property, and it will provide some screening between the subdivision and the homes that abut the ditch today.
So what you're saying is that you think the lot numbers need to be corrected, right?
Oh, did I write lot numbers?
Yeah, you put, because the one oh seven would mean that it would wrap around.
Oh, gosh!
So it needs to be one oh nine, corrected to one oh nine, through one seventeen.
Yes, that's a scribbler's error.
Okay.
Yes. No, no, totally, scribbler's error, yeah, you got me. Forty-eight pages.
Yeah.
There is scribbler's errors.
So we're waiting on this, on Blair and Viola?
All right. So yes, they propose it'll be a east-west stop direction on Blair and Viola. So that means... But, east-west stop is the proposed stopping in the traffic impact analysis, but also, it can be considered through the construction civil plans for additional stops north and south, to be considered a four-way. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Just want to keep her out.
Okay, we through the questions of staff for staff. Are there any questions of the applicant or of staff from commission before we continue and accept additional testimony? This is an opportunity to ask staff to respond to the applicant's requests. So do we have any questions of the applicant? Well, we take applicant's testimony, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, let's take the applicant's testimony first. And then we can question. This is you, this is the script.
So I don't know, I see an Alexander Adams on the call, I don't know who that is, but I don't see any of the applicants on the call.
Right, they're right here.
Oh my gosh, I bet you guys! I'm so sorry. I'm sitting up there going, you did a good job with the Blair Street!
Okay, so we have the applicants. Thanks, who am I?
I am Brad Berry, with that well, working on behalf of the applicant. By the thirty-three ninety, southwest, northwest, that eighteen thirty way, Spindore, in. And I think we wanted just to address the street width. And I think that one thing would be is to let us work with the city staff and the public works people to come up with a agreed-upon section. Because the reason we proposed the thirty feet was so we'd have a more generous planting strip to treat them. Because if it was a three-foot, with half of it taken out by the curb, you can't get a decent treatment. We were proposing four and a half feet, half for the curb, and four feet for the tree. So we felt that that was probably a better neighborhood street. It began, and it fit within the fifty-foot right-of-way, whereas if you gave the full three-foot of a planter strip there, it didn't quite fit within the fifty-foot right-of-way. So, I think that the request from the applicant would be to let us work with the city staff to come up with a section that is equitable to the city. That is the only section we really have.
Do you want to do further testimony? Do you want to further testimony? Okay, now. Do we have any questions of the applicant or of staff from the commission before we continue and accept additional testimony? So does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I will now accept public testimony regarding the proposed subdivision. If you intend to present oral testimony, please fill out a request to speak form provided by Omega. Please also clearly state your name and address when you are called to speak. This will help in preparing accurate written minutes for the hearing. If you have written testimony or other evidence to submit, please also do that to staff. So it can be entered into the record. We will begin with those in support of the application, followed by those who are opposed to the application. And we'll conclude with the testimony of those who have general comments, who are neither for nor against the application. Mr. Gaines.
Yes. Well, I can start because, uh, on this, it's like last time.
So, excuse me, your name?
Beginning of 759 Northwest Sherman.
Thank you.
You bet, sorry. We're here to make comments and yet this is already a done deal. So now a lot of what I gotta say, I think is just gonna go out the back door. Which to me, this meeting that for public comment should have been before all these things should have done. So, but anyway, what changed between now and two years ago? What I see on the map, we went from right streets going to western and three to Viola. Now we go three to western, two to Viola. Western is not going through, so we're shoving all that traffic right into Viola. We're going out one street. Yeah, you know, I'm not against it, I know it's gonna happen. But Blair Street, watch this in the future, cause Blair Street's gonna get overran and Viola's a nightmare now at times. And so we're gonna add to it. My comment is western needs to go through. The city needs to step up and get that street done. I know why it isn't. Northwest natural grass, PGE and everything else. The streets in the subdivision, if you got two cars parked in each house, that's gonna be interesting to see how everybody gets through that. Okay. In the, uh, wetland, wetland jail, I believe is what all this is. On the previous, two years ago, I think there's like 15,000 cubic feet of fill to bring it to ground zero. Where is everything going from there? It's gonna head for the river. So it's, that's where I'm gonna be. Okay? And I understand the reason for that, but, but I don't know if the drain system, and we talked the retention pond. That retention pond is not divested down. You could walk across that right now. So that water right now, that entire, uh, that field is tiled right now. And in the stuff I read two years ago, and this maybe somebody can e-educate me, the hydraulics. To my understanding, they're gonna collapse as they go through this, collapse that entire drain field. So the hydraulics, natural flow is gonna carry that water into the river. Here again, western has a big ditch. If that plugs up, that water now does not go towards western. You go right on my, I've got it on video, and everything goes east and that's naturally. And right now, that western, or the Viola drain does not handle the heavy rain. They'll plug up every time. And the retention pond will work, but with that, who's gonna take care of the retention pond? Nobody. It's gonna grow up into weeds. I'm fairly sure of that. Let us see, uh, and I'm sure the reason for the, the degrading level is the hundred-year flood plain. And so everybody, I would like to see instead of rating, just go in there and build the streets the way it is. And so low spots, that's natural to make, just have a great drain system. Yeah, so I don't know if there's anything worth it. I could say I'll probably take it by three minutes.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional public testimony? Okay, would the applicant like to address the public testimony?
That's Brady Barry again. Um, I think from the drainage perspective, the tiles will be collapsed, of course, and we will be regrading and directing a good share of the water that used to go down into the ditch will be collected through the, through the, and then run through the pond and then discharged to the public main in, uh, Viola. We are extending the master plan, uh, 36-inch pipe up Viola all the way to the end of the property. And we'll collect the water and deposit it in there. Therefore, the 20 acres that used to go to that ditch is now going to be collected and diverted away from that ditch. Uh, the western ditch, again, won't have as much water going to it because we are doing a wetland, uh, mitigation up above. So the water will be retained in that area. So I believe that the improvements proposed will create a better situation for that ditch, uh, along the back of those properties. And as far as western goes through, the city ones are doing.
Can I add one?
One, one more, Gary.
Yeah. The sewer and water, the way I understand, the last two years ago, they were gonna bring it in and tie it in off onto Sherman. Okay. I believe the city many years ago was looking at improving the sewer system on that end of town. And I don't know if it's large enough to handle all that, but that was something that was in the works prior.
That's the answer for that, um, city, and our city engineer or our public board?
Would you like Chris to address that?
Yes, I would.
Okey-dokey, Chris?
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear from the back of the, um.
Uh, I, hold on, if I do a quick summary? Yeah. Uh, so, Chris, Gary's just worried that the capacity for, uh, that the existing sewer capacity can't absorb, um, the, the new demand from the dwelling units. And that the city was investigating, um, some sewer improvements and if that has happened or occurred or where are we with our public sewer improvements? Is that?
That's, yeah. Oh, for the sanitary sewer collections?
Yes, sanitary sewer.
So that is one thing we have, we've been looking at and will be addressing with the construction, um, set currently. The plant, the plan show for a easement around the, uh, storm drainage basement to an eight-inch collector on Viola headed south to Sherman. Um, there is a larger, uh, 10-inch and deeper collector on, on Blair Street headed east. And that is gonna be picked up in the, um, in the civil set, or construction. It also is centrally located in the subdivision, just a better representation.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from the commission of either staff or the public, the public testimony is now over. I will close the public hearing at 7:23 PM. I will now entertain planning commission discussion, excuse me.
Oh, before you close the public hearing, there could be somebody raising their hands, be a suit.
Oh, okay.
Ah, no worries, I think they almost slipped through us, but we wanna make sure that they get.
Okay.
Hi, um, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, my name is Alex Adams and I live at 707 Northwest Sherman Street. Uh, we're the warehouse right on the corner, um, next to where the subdivision is, they in that plan. And I do apologize commissioners, if this is the wrong forum to ask this question, um, by all means, let me know, I can table it. But, um, by all means, I love the idea of the, a new subdivision coming in, seeing Sheridan expand. Um, but we, we have concerns specifically for the city as to how do you plan on potentially supporting, what? Almost 400 new people in the city of Sheridan if we get a lot of, you know, two children, uh, families, things of that nature. And the, there's a whole lot of office planning in the development, which is fantastic, but, but it's the social and financial impacts of things that Sheridan lacks as a city as a whole, as well as the education system that's currently in place. Um, and again, commissioners, if this is the wrong time to discuss this, let me, let me know. I apologize, it might be out of top. Great forum.
I'm not sure.
It's not pertaining to that.
Alex, we, I appreciate your comment. Un- unfortunately, it, that does not directly pertain to the decision criteria, um, which are laid out in Sheridan municipal code. And I'm really happy that you, you voiced that, I'm sorry.
But I thank you, Liam, I was wondering how to address this. And it does, we do have to stick to our agenda and what this, this is a preliminary approval process. And so we have to stick to the criteria to make these decisions at this time.
Okay, all right, can I ask one question for Liam, that may be more focused on this? Um, Liam, with the same plan mission and, uh, the approval for the building of the subdivision, does the city of Sheridan have clauses or stipulation on the sale and investment of these new homes being developed?
No.
Oh, okay. I, I, I just wanna know, uh, cause the secondary concern is just rebuild from profit and we're in the winery area. Like it's gonna suck if all these homes turn into Airbnbs and rental properties for, for any tourist destination with no real tax might come into the city. So I just wanna know if that was a part of that planning and approval process. Thank you for the answer.
Yours, Liam.
Oh, the, thank, uh, the chair's giving me the opportunity to respond. Um, again, appreciate your comment, that is not part of the approval criteria. Heidi, Heidi's got one.
Yeah, Heidi. Uh, if you don't mind, um, Alex, if you would like to give me your email, I can get you paired up with the correct, uh, avenues to ask those questions. If you'd like. Yeah.
We have, is there anybody else on the screen?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. I will restate, if there are no further questions from the commission of either staff or the public, the public testimony is now over. I will close the public hearing at 7:27 PM. I will now entertain planning commission discussion on the application. So I've declared closed, we are now going to discuss. I, I know that, um. There was concern expressed to me about the additional traffic that will be, at the number of cars, the additional traffic. I think this is something that could be a cause for concern, but something that we're gonna have to learn to deal with. Considering what the state is wanting us to do to provide additional housing. To what I have seen happening on Sheridan Road, starting with River Crest Apartments, then the Sheridan Eagle Apartments, Mr. Moinger's, um, trailer park and his duplexes for rent. The properties left on Sheridan Road to be developed and they will be developed in spite of the condition of Sheridan Road. And this is going to be happening throughout this community. We don't have many other large parcels for development. Um, there are some, a little bit of the urban growth boundary out there. Some of them will be more difficult to develop because it's in the pre-filial area. But this is something we're going to have to live with now. Development that makes us uncomfortable. This is not high-density development. The lots are reasonably sized. We're not stacking them in like sardines. That is going to come, the state is talking about allowing 2,500 square foot lots will be capping in like sardines. I also live off of Viola. So that, that the traffic is, I'm thinking that western was gonna go through would have taken the heat off of it. You know, um, it's where the school bus stop, it's so like what Kennedy said, maybe more crosswalks, maybe a designated school bus stop. There's people that are, that have to park on the street because there isn't enough room in their, in their driveways. So it makes Viola smaller at the east end, where that's where a lot of traffic will go through to go on 18. So that's, it is a concern. It, it's not gonna stop it, I get it.
Right. It's, it's one that we can be aware of.
Right, and maybe, maybe better than, than, you know, I mean, maybe for future. You know, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of kids. For, for public works to consider, once this, the building starts and traffic starts, public works keeps an eye on it and determines maybe we should have crosswalks. Maybe we should have a designated bus stop, not just several stops, but a designated stop for buses. But this is in the city's purview, not the builder's responsibility.
No, no, I know, but this is something that, you know, this is part of what we do.
Yeah, hold it to the, um, public works responsibility to kind of smooth.
I mean, the crosswalks are.
File the rough edges off from this a little bit.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? So. If there's no further planning commission discussion, staff recommend that the planning commission has a motion adopting the staff report recommending the city council approve the proposed amendments to Sheridan Development Code. Um, do I give a motion? You, you asked something else in there.
I just would ask for a motion anyway.
Oh, no, no.
We can check page 47.
I wrote the word, uh, amended to the, to the phone. Cause that was in the last script, was the LA script. So I, yeah, scribbler's error.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Okay, um. It was framed, stated.
There is, um.
You have.
Action on, on page, uh, page 274 in the packet.
And that's page 47 out of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. But I was looking, there we go. You want to, um, John, do number one?
Yes.
Okay. Read it out.
I make a motion that we adopt the staff report signing provided draft planning commission order approving the application subject to the proposed conditions of approval, including the report of all.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion through.
And I will not be able to have that draft prepared for you today as there is a scribbler's error, correct? Thank you, John.
Thank you to all of you who attended and participated in the discussion this evening. And I know, Gary, you were at the last one. Thank you, though. You had some pertinent information and questions that we needed to hear.
Fifty-seven.
Okay. Next. We have more questions.
Whoa. I get to shake my shoulders a little bit. Yeah, my talking voice, my.
I really appreciate it.
Thanks guys.
The longest.
So, oh man, my slides got off in the work session, and I, I apologize for being rattled today, y'all.
That's, that's okay, I was rattled too.
No, no.
I have not had it my day, it happens, we all have to.
We, we all have these days.
Yep.
I'm honestly not sure if I ran out of gas or if I'm shedding oil, but my, my bike just started stuttering on the side of the road, and I was like, I am not, I'm gonna keep going.
So what are you writing?
Uh, it's a trial.
This is my app, okay.
But, uh, I'm not writing it now.
No. You're walking it.
I'm walking it. Oh, Omega, the, uh, updated PowerPoint slides that I was thinking, that's the.
Alright, so we're, we're gonna be starting the back two.
It's in the.
Back two, um, now the public hearing form, do you need that back, Omega?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get it from you after.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it to you later.
Yeah, alright.
I have my sticky notes along.
Just curveball today, so I apologize, I was a little sticky on that staff report there, it was longer than I.
You did a good job.
No, that was a lot of information.
There was a lot of information, you kind of won it down, and, um.
Okay.
What are sticking ones?
So, uh, we're back in work session mode, which is much more informal for the work session. I don't need you guys to tell me to talk, which, oh man. I just get to go, um, just.
You know, it's sticking really slow.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just.
You have them on here too, they're printed for us.
Okay, oh, they're printed for you?
Yeah.
And then, and then they're packed, like.
They're in the packet.
They're in the packet, we can just go.
So you can move right along.
Yeah, move it in.
Thank you, I'm, I'm getting mine.
Now I'm on the web.
Alright, so the first slide was a. Hey.
I didn't say you, I didn't walk in and demand it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and get this done in fifteen, cause we got through a lot last week, uh, last week and last month. So, we got enough to date, uh, we went through the ADU standards, potential.
Liam?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Can I? I'm sorry, can I interrupt everybody? Uh, I just wanted to sign off, I'm excited.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not there tonight, um, Chris and Gary are both gonna sign off, and, oh my gosh, I don't actually remember. Okay, never mind, ignore me.
Okay.
Yeah, be quiet, everyone.
Hi Heidi, we're good with that. Uh, bad.
Sir.
No worries.
Bye Chris, bye Gary, if you're here, thanks for coming.
Bye guys.
We're gonna, we're gonna get into the meat and potatoes of development codes, so. I, I always get bugged out when everybody leaves for the later agenda, I, there's a party meeting.
They're so fun to be had, friends.
Pretty soon, the iceberg, so I see that, uh, Nick and Alexander are staying on Zoom, and I appreciate that as well, so. Uh, thanks for everybody who stayed, I really appreciate it.
What it was, I'm sorry, that's what it was, Alexander is still on there, and I didn't get his email address, so I was gonna give mine, and maybe he can email me, I'm so surprised, that's exactly what it was.
Hi Heidi, I'm sorry, I'm a.
Get it done.
What, can you guys do that in the Zoom chat?
We don't, we don't have a chat to each other for this, that's why.
Oh, dang.
And that's why I got worried about how he was gonna contact us to follow up, so, sorry, interrupt. It's H, doesn't Heidi, F, E, L, L, and this part is long, at cityofsheridanor.com. And if you miss all that, you can also just look on her website, or you can call, send a call, sorry, interrupt, I just did a little miss that.
I got it, thank you so much. No worries, I just, I just really wanted to talk about, uh, townhomes, so, thanks Heidi, for just cutting me off.
And we're into attached single units, right?
We're into attached single units, because last week we went through the ADU standards, the duplex standards, which are a state requirement. ADU standards, also some of those changes are state requirements, talk about the SRO standards, you guys are getting the theme, right? State requirement, uh, manufactured dwelling standards, mix of state requirements and some planning commission decisions, right? Keeping everything in line with single-family dwellings, uh, affordable housing in commercial zone, you said that's something you want staff to look into. Um, I spoke about this with Heidi, it's something that we can look into in the future, um, investigate and make sure it matches with all of our economic plans as we go through those Heidi processes. Um, removal barriers to housing, we're kinda getting through this one, we talked about the fine standards, how they could potentially be prohibitive. Um, we talked about actually allowing mixed uses in the mixed use zones, and we talked about expanding the, uh, the area you can have for a accessory structure in residential zones before a conditional use permit is required. So overall, just removing barriers to doing stuff, and now we get to one of my favorite topics, attached single unit housing, which begins on slide four. So, speaking of what Paul was talking about, about twenty-five hundred square foot lots, because there's this really weird, um, state statute, R S ninety-two point zero three one, if you read it a couple times, it still doesn't make sense.
Did you read it a lot?
Oh gosh, a lot. Um, this is the missing middle housing land division section, um, and basically, it's written really weirdly, and it's, the idea is that it will permit, um, middle housing in cities via land division. One thing that has been interpreted by it, uh, is that it will allow the division of existing types of middle housing into ownership opportunities, right? Which, the idea is if you own a fourplex, um, and you wanna terminate into townhomes, um, and you can legally divide it onto lots, and you have legal fire separation, you go, you do that. That is one interpretation of this state statute. Unfortunately, uh, that interpretation means that as we're now permitting duplexes on five thousand square foot lots, theoretically, an individual could partition that duplex into two ownership lots, if those, um, if they had a firewall going all the way up to the attic. Theoretically, right, again, this is a really weird state statute, it's hard to interpret, um, there's one interpretation, it's an interpretation that people have made, and they've made comments, and the reason that I bring this up is, on different people's PAPA amendments, post acknowledgement plan amendments, right, super fancy planning words, um, sent to the LCD for their legislative updates to comply with these code, they have noted that if you have permitted townhomes, and now you're permitting duplexes, um, that you should, because of this bill, look at your townhome standards. That doesn't mean we need to change our standards, but, um, that's a comment that has been on other people's post acknowledgement plan amendments, can you guys tell I'm a nerd? Um, yeah, if you're reading other people's PAPA stuff, you're a dork, um. A geek, um, so, basically, the slide that I concluded shows a legally permitted duplex on a five thousand square foot lot, and then if that had fire separation, it can be now partitioned into townhomes. So this is a problem, because our townhome lots are not five thousand square feet in the R two zone, right? I didn't talk about this in the R one zone, sorry, they're, they're four thousand and thirty-five hundred, like we discussed during the subdivision application. Um, they're not permitted in the R one zone currently. The reason, this is, this is a snag, is that you can then build duplexes, partition them into smaller townhomes. So this is a good reason to take a look at our townhome standards, doesn't mean we need to change it. So a lot of the stuff that I presented to you all have pretty much been either mandatory, or, hey, everybody, like, this is a sticking point in our code, and it's been generally problematic. This next section is on option for the commission to consider. So we flipped the pages, uh, this is what our current code, this is how it works, right? Which is that a duplex, which is two units, requires seventy-five hundred square feet, that's gonna go down to five thousand, that's state requirement. Two duplexes, therefore, right, um, have the same number of units per square foot. I wrote fifteen hundred, and it should actually be fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, that's a scribble reserve, uh, should be fifty thousand, it says fifteen hundred. But basically, today, four, if you have four units of duplexes and four units of townhomes all in a row, you would have the same area, and that's what this diagram shows, right?
Right.
We imagine our four duplexes in a row, four thousand on the outside, thirty-five hundred on the inside, thirty-five hundred on the inside, four thousand on the outside, that's the same as two seventy-five hundred lots. So it gives a little favoritism to duplexes, right? Cause if you're just doing duplexes, you get an extra five hundred square feet, right? You're just gonna do a duplex, is that five hundred square feet that if you just did a duplex townhome, they have to do two four thousands, right? But they're pretty much equivalent, so today, our code is designed so that duplexes and townhomes are the same density. But now, duplexes are way more dense, and theoretically, duplex townhomes are permissible via building and then partition. So, that leaves us with a weird situation, and, and as you guys know, I like to ask questions, so here's the discussion question, which is, which middle housing configuration, we have to have one of them, um, which configuration do you generally prefer or would want to see in Sheridan? Two detached duplexes, or a row of four attached townhomes? And remember, this is only permissible in the medium density and high density zones, not in the single family zone.
So that's in your R two and R three.
R two and R three, right, which are our high density zones, which is a building type that is preferable to the commission?
In townhomes, um, those are more open to, you know, first-time homebuyers, right? Which, when we talk about tax revenue, we talk about program support, we talk about school district support, that, and I might be speaking just as someone who was moved to Sheridan because of the first-time homebuyer opportunities, but then obviously, I'd like to think, I volunteer for some stuff, you know, and so I do think townhomes are, are more friendly to that development, which I think is important.
For us, the tax base somewhat.
Yeah, so I think that entry-level homebuyer opportunity, I do think Sheridan has the opportunity to draw that in from neighboring areas that are much more expensive, and I think with that comes quite a bit of, um, community positives, where duplexes.
Duplexes, and when I, when I picture, when we talk complexes in townhomes, I picture eh, duplexes. Townhomes seem to be built a little better, have a little more. You don't think so?
No.
They're dayhomes.
Pardon?
They're dayhomes, they're built in the day, so, you know, especially in Oregon, they use solar speed, particle board, it gets wet, it rocks, you get mold, so.
That's, that's part of the builder, the, the.
Doesn't matter on duplexes, in the homes.
Yeah, they just tell them that.
These homes that are talked about build, if you build in the day, we see where the inspector came in, they'll build seven houses in a row, inspector checked the first house, there's six, they don't look at, so they get cheaper, cheaper, cheaper.
Well, but I agree with Kennedy on this, with the buying potential.
Well, you get more people with the townhomes than you get with the duplex.
Yes, we, and there are people that plan on staying. They, they're putting downwards and plan on staying for a while.
Comes with bigger community and apps.
Yes, it has a more positive community impact for us.
But that means more going into the sewer, more going in, you know, more water being used, or electricity.
Either way, the densities, the, 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 the question isn't, will people be able to build at this density? It is, what kind of building types are you incentivizing?
Yeah, either way, people are gonna be there, it's just what their intentions are.
It's either way, you can build a duplex, right? On June, on June first of twenty-twenty-five, you will build the build a duplex in Sheridan on a five thousand square foot lot in the R two or R three zones, regardless of what the city council commission does.
Right, so we have to plan for, yeah, we, yeah, the state is putting sort of our heads for a lot of things now. We'll be.
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, the, the, the local control is becoming more of kind of what flavor, right, you want. And so that's, I prepared sort of a list of pros and cons, just short ones, to think about, about a code which favors duplexes versus a code which favors townhomes. Currently, the code will favor duplexes, um, if we don't make change, and, and that's not a bad thing, right? Duplexes are actually, I, I love duplexes, um, they're commensurate in scale to single-family dwellings. So that's their big selling point, is that unlike a townhome, it's not a big, it's not a big row, it's not a big block, they blend in a little bit better, they're commensurate in scale, in neighborhoods where the duplexes are on corners, you sometimes can't even tell that it's a duplex, right, like, so that's the big selling point for the duplex, is it, it blends well. They provide more rental opportunities, townhomes are typically an ownership opportunity, duplexes are often a rental opportunity, which is something that potentially could be considered when deciding, should the code be a little bit more favorable to single-family duplexes, be even or more favorable to townhomes? That's Paul, like, there's an advantage to that and a disadvantage to that. Duplexes will have a lower parking mandate, um, duplexes are gonna have to have the exact same parking as a single-family, we discussed this last time, it's gonna be two spaces, so that'll be two spaces for two families, that's how duplexes are gonna work. Come June, next year, doesn't matter what we do, that's how duplexes will work, right?
Yeah, no matter what.
A code which favors townhomes, right, I think, uh, Commissioner Amos has hit the hammer on the head, uh, it's more ownership, uh, homeownership opportunity, less renter opportunity. Townhomes are commensurate in scale to small apartments, not single-family dwellings, so it is something to think about, we only permit them in the R two and R three zones, they're more similar to small apartment buildings, because a five, our code allows you to have up to five, and a five-block townhome is kind of like a small apartment complex, right? So that's another thing to think about, what are they architecturally similar to? Duplexes tend to be more like single-family, small units of townhomes are like single-family, larger blocks of townhomes are more like apartments, architecturally. Townhomes have the upside that are attracting both first-time homeowners and older homeowners who are down selling. Yes.
And I'll just say, as someone who works, obviously, every single day in the rental market, that, um, anything that is appealing to a first-time homebuyer, it is not out of the question at all that it actually ends up entering the rental market. Um, I see that all the time, I'm seeing it in like the, the Lennar Baker Creek home area, um, that big development that went in there in McMinville. Anything that appeals to first-time homebuyers, um, it is, I don't have statistics on it, but it's not out of the question, actually, it circles back around at some point into becoming the rental market, so it's kind of, I don't wanna say the best of both worlds, but, um, it doesn't count that out altogether.
No, it doesn't. Townhomes are often, I told you as well, right, so are single families, so.
Right, yeah, and duplexes are more often rentals?
Yeah.
Then, but with the new thing, when you, when you set the firewall, then you can buy.
There are, you can, you can create ownership opportunities for two families in one structure on one lot, it is a little bit more legally complex, and so developers don't really seek to do it. Um, but it's, it is plausible that a duplex could also be a homeownership opportunity, but the townhome is a more flexible development option.
Right, it gives the option for rentals, but it's friendlier towards purchasing for somebody, first-time homebuyers, for damageers, retirement people who are tired of taking care of their property, it's a place where they can have left land to deal with. And it, I think it adds stability. I do, it adds stability when you have people coming in and buying the property.
I would agree.
And it, it makes it, uh, makes you feel a little cozier, you don't have a lot of the in-out, in-out. With, with, I have, from experience, I, with the bookstore, I have a lot of people, I, they're back, you're back, and then all of a sudden they disappear, because they were renters and they just stopped and moved. The homeowners, I see them year after year after year, it's, it's stable for businesses, for retail, it helps our bottom line pocketbook. I'm inclined to a code which favors townhomes.
We do, I've seen that, we've watched the prices of, of grant, of rentals go.
Yes.
A lot of people are to the point now where, in a lot of cases, they can buy for almost the same price as when they were.
Right.
I would, I would lean more towards the dentals as well.
So on the next slide, I just presented a couple of options, right, there's sort of three things we can do. I've broken these down into density standards, right? The first is do nothing, which I meant to call the five thousand, four thousand, thirty-five hundred. The first is do nothing, which I'm gonna call the 5,000, 4,000, 3,500 square, right? That's, a duplex can come in at 5,000. Townhome with one shared wall is at 4,000, a townhome with two shared walls is at 35, right? That's the do nothing, and that would create a code which generally favors a duplex style development. We can take it back to equal. There's a couple of different ways to do this. We can go back to equal simplified split, which would be 5,000 for duplexes, 2,500 for townhomes, regardless of how many common walls they have. We could do a back to equal with the still, the split that makes it better the more townhomes you build, right? So, the 5,000, 3,000, 2,000, still gonna add up to 5,000, but now you have to build a row of townhomes to get there, instead of just doing two floating townhomes. So, the back to equal split, that's 2,500 or 2,500, that would result in maybe some more duplex style townhomes. The larger split might result in some four block or five block townhomes, which is something to consider. Or modify the code so that it completely favors townhomes, so the townhomes have a much higher density than duplexes. And my proposed split here would be 5,000, 2,500, 2,000, right? So, you've got 2,500 for the ones on the outside, 2,000, which is a really skinny lot, but developable for a townhome on the inside. So, now you'd be basically giving a townhome developer an extra thousand square feet for every four townhomes they build, but only if they built in that manner. So, just, these are options. The option that SAP has presented in the draft code amendments is the back to equal 5,000, 2,500, 2,500 split. Because, and my thoughts here was, one, it makes townhomes an equal option to duplexes. It allows you to build triplex townhomes at the same density level without having to do a lot of math, and it makes my job easier.
I don't wanna disincentivize duplexes either.
Exactly.
Because, you know, as as Sheridan hopefully continues to develop, we do still need rental houses.
Yeah.
And again, duplexes, no matter what you do, if we go back to equal, if you favor townhomes in amendments, remember, this is gonna go before council, I'm taking your recommendations to council, right? And we can talk about process when we're done too, just to be clear on where we're at. Duplexes are about to get a lot better.
Sure.
Everywhere. So, I'm not talking about adding townhomes as outright permitted use in the R1 zone, where duplexes will still be allowed on a 7,500 square foot lot, yeah. So, I think that if the fear is, oh man, townhomes are slightly more efficient, and we're back a thousand square feet per floor, which is not nothing in a big development like the size of the one that was just applied for today, then duplexes would still have a really efficient place in the single family, the low density zone, where they're really commensurate architecturally.
So, that's number two.
Yeah, I would lean towards option two. Yeah, if we, if we equal. What do you think, John, John and John or John?
Yeah.
You guys can't sit on the same sofa.
John, 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 why did John treat?
So, of those two splits, again, the 2,500, 2,500, theoretically, we're all talking theoretically, not in the real world, we're on the road, would lean to producing more duplex style. The 3,000, 2,000 split would lean to produce more block style. And all the townhomes that we have in Sheridan today are duplex style. Do they exist? They're out there, sort of, maybe, kind of, I've talked about it.
So, they do that, I mean, the townhomes would, they could do 2,500.
We could do either of these splits, and in fact, we could do nothing. So, if you wanted to do the 5,000, 2,500, 2,500, that would make the code leaner, so there's an advantage there. The code is simpler now, it just says townhomes are 2,500. But, then it's more likely to produce sort of a duplex style of townhome.
But if they did 5, 3, and 2, we'd do?
It would theoretically prompt someone to do more block style, because if they did five block style townhomes, they're suddenly getting that 1,000 square feet benefit.
I would go for two.
It's still, they're both equal, they're both making all equivalent.
I would go for the 5,000, 2,500, 2,500. I think that would make for more pleasant neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And more pleasant parking situations, and also higher value. Yeah, okay, so what do you think?
That's what I was.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the land use.
We all worry about it.
Yeah, it's the man, you just accept it.
Yeah. Getting at a thinking about it.
Yes, that's, I like, I like that option, but I wanted to present two of the all of them.
Thank you for that, Chris.
Yeah, so, basically, this is what the R2 and R3 zones would look like if we did that 2,500 change. So, you've got the table.
We've got it.
Take a look at them, yep, right there.
And it works.
It lays it all out, makes everything even, simple, clean, and it will be, instead of these long lists of uses that confuse people, we will have tables that you can look at, and it will be good.
And it'll be easy.
Easy, yes. Okay, last, I swear, I'm almost gonna shut up about townhomes. Never gonna shut up about townhomes. There's a couple of weird things right now in our code. We don't have a shared wall requirement that's detailed, which creates these breezeway townhomes, that's what we have in town, where they have a breezeway, or just a small little bit that kisses, you can imagine the ones above Viola, they're great little homes. I actually really love them, but they're not townhomes.
Townhomes have a shared wall.
Have a shared wall.
Whether it be a garage wall or living walls.
So, I am proposing adding a shared wall requirement to close that loophole. However, right now, the requirement that I'm pitching is a minimum footage. We could also go with a percentage based requirement. Different codes approach it differently, I went with 20 feet, because if it's a fire rated wall, it should be 20 feet long anyway.
That's a good region.
So, but we could also go with a percentage requirement, which helps keep things architecturally more similar.
Well, it's easier to say than 20 feet, though.
It's easy, but then it does.
Then you won't have to do the math.
I don't have to do the math. The downside of going with the flat footage, there is a downside, is that you can get kind of just a section of kisses, again, like a bump out the garage that's the shared wall, which some people find aesthetically jarring. Personally, I think it leaves, it creates and codifies our shared wall requirement while leaving flexibility for the developer to pick a style that works for them.
Right.
So, that would be my pitch, but there are downsides, and I don't wanna tell you my opinion is bad.
Well, that, that
Yeah, the percentage one seems like there actually could be room for loopholes there too.
Right.
Yeah, there's room for loopholes.
Let's just say 20 foot shared wall.
20 foot shared wall is my proposal.
And then, again.
As you need anyways.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, but it's simple, yeah.
Yeah.
Then there's this parking requirement, so single family dwellings cannot count their garage as parking in Sheridan. That's in the municipal code. They can't count their garage, and I understand why that requirement's there. It's because the first thing that you put in your garage.
Is junk.
Is your Triumph that just jumped out on the side of the road, right? And that's what goes in the garage, I get it.
They hide them from sight.
I get it. But, single family, attached single family dwellings are really garage dependent. And I wanna go back to the photo on the left of the Viola townhomes, which I really, again, I actually like these houses, I think they're cute, skinny houses. I really, I really enjoy them. But unless they have a one car garage and then a paved two car driveway, because that paved two car driveway is the two parking spaces, and the garage doesn't count.
It's storage.
Yeah, it's storage. So, townhomes, especially as people build them, are a little bit more garage dependent, right? The garages are narrower, it's usually a one car garage, and it's usually more functional garage, less of a storage garage. So, in order, the townhomes are still gonna have a higher parking requirement than duplexes. We would still have it be two, but I would propose that we allow one parking space to be counted for townhomes in the garage.
I agree with that, yet that encourages more.
I think that's what I reached at last.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, duplexes, we can't do that. We'll be, it's gonna be two, so I think we should lump them in with the single family dwellings, your garage is.
You're on your own, you're doing what you do, but townhomes are, this is the way it's gonna be.
This is the way it's gonna be, and I think that will allow townhomes to use their functional garages in a good way.
And they'll still park out, still drive.
Yeah, everyone's gonna park in the street.
And, yeah, and everyone's gonna be parking the street.
So.
And, and the state is going to say, we can't have for ADUs, we can't have parking requirements anyway, so.
Oh, we're, yeah, we can't have parking for ADUs, so.
We're, that's gonna be changing too, for duplexes, I don't know, yes.
So, this last slide just summarizes the other changes that I've made. The big one is right at the beginning of the proposed code amendments, there's a huge use table. We are not adding or removing any uses from the Sheridan code at this time. Well, we are adding single room occupancy. This concatenated use table does not change what people are allowed to do. We will, before getting anything written, we will make sure of it. Because if we did change any of those uses or remove anything, you have to notify landlords, right? And we do not want to, we're not trying to pull the rug out of anybody. We're just trying to make it so that if you wanna know what use you can do in a zone, you look at one table. It'll be one table, and it says, R2, you can do this, R3, you can do this, right? One place, you don't have to go scattering everywhere. That's a philosophical choice, our code was written in an era where codes were physically given to someone, so you could print out a zone, give them the zone, and go, hey, you can do everything in this zone. Our code's now online, most people access it online, the table will make it leaner from online. So, that's what that is. We're cleaning up the definitions throughout. It's based off of the state definitions provided in statute and provided in the Mastinberup Model Code. The state still uses the word family, but their model codes use the word unit. So, state model codes now all say, single unit dwelling. To make our code easier to update in case state requirements change, I recommend changing family to unit, as well as updating our definitions to be in line with current state definitions beyond the definition of days people already talked about. So, that's just cleaning stuff up, and you'll have a chance to read through that before anything. Ask. The dimensional standards tables, you've seen a demo of them for the R2 and R3 zones. Again, instead of a long list of dimensional standards, here's a table. Everything's in one table, easy to read, easy to understand. Again, just a more modern way of presenting the state requirements or the new requirements after the state amendments. Giving standards their own sections, another thing that's, again, more based off of queryable code than they hand you a code, that's how our code is written. So, if you wanna look at ADUs in the R1 zone, there's a whole bunch of rules, they're the same as the rules in the R2 zone, they're the same as the rules in the R3 zone, but it's designed so that you can print out, hand some with the code. We propose this time making it just one section for ADUs, so ADUs have their own section. Canvas has its own section, right? Instead of repeating the same standards, we would not be changing any standards that are included in the code amendments, it's just moving them out of the zones and into design and development standard sections. There's nothing wrong with the current way that it's written, it's just philosophically different, right? We're dealing with a code written from paper, we're now most of the time communicating online, so. I'm proposing we move towards that code, if the commission's like, no, we wanna paper code, I want you to be able to hand out packets that are super easy, I can also just make summary packets too, so, that's the other thing. And finally, we talked about the density standard. There's density standards in every single zoning section. There's also minimum lot sizes, it's the same thing twice. Density standards used to mean something, they used to be used during subdivision applications, they used to be used to determine code updates, like, could we print duplexes here, could we commit multifamily here? All of the state requirements are basically saying your density standards don't matter. We don't have a density standard in our comp plan for residential, because we have one comp plan residential zone. I recommend we just strike this section. Density standards can be engineered via the minimum lot size for the expected uses in the zone. We can calculate them backwards, and that way, if there's more state mandates, our density standards don't have to constantly keep updating. It's just a block of code that doesn't mean anything anymore. And it kind of bums me out, but that's true. So, let's just get rid of it. I talked to our attorney, and I said, hey, can I get rid of this? And he was like, oh yeah, it doesn't mean anything anymore. So, I propose we remove that from every section.
They're probably doing the 21st century.
Yes, well, we're. That's correct. You got me.
No, but that's to keep it simple.
I like the thought of this, you know, and some of that stuff, keep them to do the same thing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it simple, 'cause ORS is complicated enough.
Yeah. That's it, super simple.
Well, I, the last ask was not as simple as I thought it would be.
No, just be it too much, okay?
Yes.
It's dedicated to the simple.
But, those are, those are all the remainder of the proposed code amendments. I'm happy to take your direction, so my next steps will be, again, to do a work session with city council. The way that I like to do it is work session, work session, legislative amendment, legislative amendment. And that way, what you guys are voting on is gonna be what is, city council has looked at and already gone, hey, here's where we wanna direct it. When I present the material to city council, it'll look a little different, and I'll specifically be mentioning the items that apply to the amendments that I've suggested, or why this decision was, where the planning commission came from.
Then, then we'll see if they think, what do we think?
Yeah. And if they don't, we'll get the code amendments, and you can make recommendations at that time.
Yeah.
So, do we need to make a motion?
No.
No, no, this is just, we've been making suggestions and.
Okay.
I'm taking the.
Agreed, and he's got it right there. He hasn't taken notes.
He's thinking about it on his long law compass.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, work session, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, finding commission comments. Any comments? I, I think I have a comment, this was a great idea, we did this, we did it. We got it done, and it's only ten minutes after eight. Little past curfew.
I need to clap, I'm just giving us a round of applause. My comment would be, I just appreciate everyone that, and those that are still on Zoom, that, that had some really impactful, you know, statements and comments, and it's just so people care.
At least starting on to get involved, yeah, yay. Okay, go ahead, your motion, computer. Move.
I make a motion, I'm here.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You joke too bad.
Oh, no, no.
Good job.